Just as a reminder, if everyone would please put all cell phones on vibrate or turn them off so that they are not a distraction during the meeting. This evening, we have no public hearings under appointments. We have a budget presentation for the library. So I will invite Melissa and Lindsay up to present their presentation. And Mr. St. Jean, the one on the right. Thank you. For those following along, this is section 15 in the Budget Binder.
My name's Melissa Hewitt, and I'm the Director of the Barrington Public Library, and thank you tonight for having me. I was told that there's been a streak in having snacks at this meeting. So mine's a little double whammy. I don't know if you guys are familiar with this little gimmick, Tastes the Rainbow. I also want you to taste the rainbow of opportunities that we have at the Barrington Public Library because visiting us makes everybody smarties.
Whoa. Very well.
I don't know how that compares to Oreos, right?
Yeah.
So my presentation tonight solely focuses on the changes that my budget has seen, an increase or a decrease in. The first one is what Connor has already reported, that the benefits line for the library has decreased because there was a change in the overall rate for health benefits for next year. It's 1% versus the estimated 10% that Connor had. So for us, that's a decrease from what I originally put in my budget of $24.94. Of course, the changes in this line overall was just because there was a census change within the library. So that's why, and that is really the bulk of our change for this year. The next, stay put. The next line that has seen a change, but in a good change, is my contracts line. Our fabulous representative at the State Library was able to lock in this year's rates for next year for our ancestry database and our Heritage Quest database. So that total was $800. Another change that I had originally put in my budget that is not included now is digital access to the New York Times. There wasn't enough support from other public libraries within the state, and that was a $410 item. So that is not included in my contract line for this year. So the total rate of change was a saving of $2,400.
And so that changes for everybody with their budget materials. The original request was $62.88, so you can update that to $58.78 as the requested amount for $43.21.
My next line was line number 4322, which is the program expenses. I had put in for $5,000. There was just a little bit of a question from the ABC that I wanted to address. In 2019, I applied for and was awarded three grants for a total of $600 from the New Hampshire Humanities Council. They changed their grant process a little bit this year in that they offer a flat rate of $200 for information speakers. If you have what they call live actors, it's a little bit more that you will earn. But libraries that are the hosts now have to cover any mileage. So the library takes on the mileage, and we get the $200 grant from the council. And then another clarification, because I think there was a little misunderstanding with the way it was worded. The library will use about $2,000 above the $5,000 to bring additional programming to the library. And other payment sources for next year include, the friends of the Barrington Public Library have already approved $1,500 in programming, additional programming for next year. We can apply for two New Hampshire Humanities Council presenters. If there's money left over like they did this year, you can apply for a third, so that number may change. This year, we did not apply for the Kids Books and the Arts Grant because we had such great support from First East Coast Bank. They gave us a $2,500 check to support our summer reading program this year. If they choose not to do that this year, then we will apply for the Kids Books and the Arts Grant. And that award is based on how many total public libraries apply for this grant money and also the per capita of library support for your library. So for instance, there's a breakdown. If your per capita rate is 0 to 25, then you pay this much. And if it's 2501 to this much, but it shifts each year with whatever the per capita rate and how many applicants are. So that's kind of a moving target number, but in the past, for us, it's been between $200 and $300. And then lastly, we have currently seven out-of-town cards. I'm just thinking of what we've done to date. We have seven folks that have decided that the Barrington Library is the place to be, and they have paid their $60 out-of-town library card fee. So if you multiply that by seven, that's a little extra money that's in our programming, and that's, we allocate that to bring some other more requested, popular, the arts classes, the cooking classes. Those are expensive items, and we tend to reserve that money from our out-of-town cards for best. So hopefully, those few points will clear up any questions or uncertainties that were about that programming line. Again, so nothing really has changed in the dollar amount. It's just a further explanation. What's next? First Bond Council, it was in my notes that I'd received from the ABC. I put it in my budget this year, just like I did last year, and it was at this time last year where the Select Board said, "Okay, we'll put that in our town line." I am certainly not one to make assumptions, so I put it in. And then I found out that it would be transferred over to the town's legal line for this year as well as it was last year. So thank you for taking that over, which that is really the bulk of our increase if you look at the breakdown for each line, which was kind of nice to see our overall increase go down. And another thing that has changed since I last, when our budgets were due, is to line 4431, which is my library building improvements and maintenance line. I had put a rough estimate based on just some conversations I've had with electricians, contractors of $10,000 to putting in the automatic door openers in our library. Having finally got hard estimate from, or quotes, I got one from Door Control Incorporated, which has been a popular company that many libraries have used. They came back with a total of $3,292 for two automatic door openers, and that includes the receivers and the four wall switches that would have to be mounted inside and outside of the building. And since Bob Salisbury is our town electrician, I reached out to him to get a quote from him, and he came back with, based on all the specifications that Door Control Inc. provided, that his charge for running all the electrical wiring and installing the switches would be $1,180 for a grand total of $44.72. So the total line for my library building improvement and maintenance is $59.72 because originally it was 750 and 750, $1,500 for one, and then adding this project in. So to continue with the question that I had gotten from the ABC, who's, "Are we legally required to install automatic door openers?" True, honest answer is no. But this would make accessibility much easier for our library patrons, community, folks that come and use our space, along with just visitors. Right now, speaking from experience, when I pushed my double-stacked stroller in the door with my twins, the first time I came to fill out paperwork at the library when I was first hired, I cut my hand because I can't open the door and push my stroller through at the same time. Imagine someone else with a walker that's trying to bring their stuff. It's really hard to hold those open, hold open those doors that are so heavy while trying to get through with your books and all that other stuff. So although it may not be legally required to install them, it would just make the space more accessible to everybody, regardless of who is occupying this space. So I figure if we can make accessibility a little bit easier next year for everybody and into the future, the library would be willing to take on that project. Is that a good, any other questions from that yet?
I think the committee was interested in with, if you're building a new building, and this would be used for maybe two years maximum, is that a wise investment to make a modification to this building?
Well, from what I've seen, from who else we shared that building with, if the recreation department were to come upstairs and take over that space, they may have some folks on their staff in the summertime that may not be able to open doors. They may be in a wheelchair. They may have crutches because they're injured. We've, I've seen a lot of their camp counselors come through on crutches and boots and that sort of thing. So making this change now would just benefit the building in the future, regardless of who's in there. That's how I perceive it. Next was, this was already noted in my narrative, that there was a change of $150 in my line for $45.60, the conference and training amount. Just this year, there's been that much of a change, so I can only imagine that there would be that same change for next year. So I just wanted to clarify that again. What else? The dues and fees. Again, we participate in a lot of consortium group rates through the State Libraries, and there was a slight increase in our fee for movie licensing and that sort of thing, so that's why there's a measly $47 change in line 4570, which is dues and fees. And then to keep up with the digital times and everybody moving towards eBooks and audiobooks and that sort of downloads, I've increased our 4643 digital materials line to an extra $923 to accommodate that growth. That's about how much we've seen in usage. Statistics keep showing a small increase in how many people have been downloading eBooks and audiobooks, and every month I have to compile those statistics, and it's kind of fascinating to see how many people really are using these services. And also, this includes our hoopla services, which is just audiobooks, music, movies, TV. That has seen a steady increase. We have, I think, a cap of $400 a month, and every month, we're pretty darn close to that spot. So as of, I think it was September, I've already expended all of the town's lines, so now the library's picking that up through our miscellaneous account for the remaining, remainder of the year. So grand total, that are the new numbers for my budget for 2020, is the wages and benefits totals $303,348. My operating budget is $52,544 for a total library budget of $355,892.
Are there any other questions from the Advisory Budget Committee? And just, oh, I'm sorry, I was just going to add to the total impact. Based on the changes presented by the library director tonight, the total increase, if you'd like to add it on your amount change, is $27,584, and that changes the percent change to 8.4% based on the approved budget for last year. And that's based on the reductions in the library contracts and building maintenance lines.
Could you say that again, please?
Amount increase is $27,584.
Thank you.
And percent change is 8.4. Questions from the board?
I just had a question. With digital media's going up, would books and multimedia come down? Is that typically like an inverse relationship there?
No, no, we've seen, and it all depends. You know, it's how many more people come into our community that are commuters and need audiobooks to listen to going back and forth. I did not increase my books and multimedia line this year. I kept it the same as last year to accommodate the slight increase in the digital usage. Perhaps next year, there will be more of a demand for more print books, but that $18,000 for books and multimedia seems to be the right amount for our library. And also, there's no more space for books, so I really can't increase my book budget without really removing and doing some serious weeding in the library because we just have no place to put the books, except going up, and that's just not safe.
Dan?
I keep on seeing on TV, do you utilize FreeLibrary.gov? You go online? Do you guys utilize that?
Not consistently. I don't...
I guess you go on, it's on TV all the time, FreeLibrary.gov.
Oh, that's the little Free Libraries. Is it the little Free Library program, possibly? I think that's what it may be. That's something that...
There's all the guy, he, he was walking up and he went on to go, the verbal version of it, online, FreeLibrary.gov.
I haven't seen that commercial, so I'll have to go look for it on Google and see what I can find about it.
On Channel 10, something like that.
I don't have regular cable, so I don't know.
I can't afford you.
I can either, that's why I do something different. But I'll look into it too and just see what that...
If you need, somebody needs a special book or whatever, I guess you go on FreeLibrary.gov and get anything you want.
I'm sure there's some copyright and other things built into that, but that's why, if we don't have something, that's why we offer interlibrary loan services through all the others, public libraries and college, university libraries throughout the state. We can usually get stuff from other libraries, too.
I guess I've got my budget. So must be...
Yeah, no, I'll have to look into that one. Any other questions about the operating budget?
The only other thing I noted, but Connor explained to me, was the percentage change from the salary lines was not consistent with the increases aligned from the town end. So he further explained that there was a salary correction that was made by the library committee. That answered my question I had there.
Okay, great.
I think that was all I had. And the Advisory Budget Committee picked up on everything else I had with regard to the doors.
Great, awesome. All right, so then I will move on to the new facility and future services, because I know that was sort of like, broke it down into two parts. So to answer one question, it would be a new library and community center, in that it will be a building that is adequately sized for current operations, for staffing, our collections, our services that we offer, the collection that we have, and the current programming that we offer. It also will support growth, something that we cannot do right now. We can't grow, we can't move, so our collection can't grow. That's why I attest to Andy's question about my books and multimedia budget line. I can't buy more books because I don't have a place to put more books. We could offer more services and resources. Another thing we could do is do programs and multiple concurrent uses. For example, you bring your children to Storytime, they are hanging out with Ms. Wendy in the meeting room, and at the same time, we could be having a special class for parents and guardians of kids in a different location. So that's my sense of this new library and community center. Another thing to consider is that libraries are a center for the community to come together. We have different groups from all over Barrington and outside of Barrington that comes and requests to use our one and only meeting space. And this year, I've had seven requests to date, and I've had to turn away four. And squeeze in one person, and it's just chaos in the library on those particular days because it's just so busy and so congested. And it also limits families coming in after school to use our meeting room with little kids because that's one whole section of our collection that is inaccessible to patrons when they come into the library because meetings are taking place in the children's room, which is, you know, where a great chunk of children's books are kept. There was a question about immediate changes. The only immediate change we would have once our building is built is a change in the custodian's hours. Larger building, needs more time to clean the larger building, and perhaps fix any small maintenance type thing that would happen. Future changes, because us librarians are so driven by data, we keep statistics for everything. So after a year being in the new space, we would re, I would reevaluate the staffing, the programming that we offer, and the collection usage. For instance, when the library had their $100,000 renovation two decades ago, that first year with a new space, they doubled their circulation amount. They went from 15,000 items circulated to about 35,000. So if I'm prepping for that, that's a huge change. We're looking at over 100,000 items being circulated within that first year if we're basing on historical data. Another thing to think about is our staffing setup that I would consider. We currently have two desk clerks, but in a 13,000 square foot space and having people run around, perhaps we hire somebody part-time just to put books back because that's part of their duties, and that could be something that a part-time person could do. Another thing to consider is our collection usage. Right now, we have some really great materials for middle schoolers and high schoolers, but they can't get to the library. So what if in the future, we had that teen space for them, and all of a sudden, our middle school and high school materials are flying through the, you know, flying out the door, and there's people are all excited to come and try different things. We can offer programming to them after school, like Girls Who Code and some other STEAM and STEM activities. You know, there's the chance that we would have to reevaluate our collection and try to figure out what else we can do within the new space. So I can only say that everything would be backed up by statistics, both historical and within the last year, just how things have changed. I'm not one to just say, "Yay, brand new building, give me $50,000 for programming." I don't want to, that's not the way I roll. I like to back everything up with data. And also, again, much of this data, plus other stuff that we keep track of that's just not needed, is all available through the State Library's website. We have to provide this for funding every year under the Institute of Museum and Library Science. In order to get the government funding for public libraries, we have to provide annual data, and it goes back, I think, online five or six years. So all of the stuff that the Barrington Library has been doing, plus other libraries within our, you know, immediate surroundings, all have to report their findings and their data and that sort of thing. So I would definitely say that we would have to evaluate after one full year being in the new space before we go making any serious changes or requests. And then lastly, is the warrant article for the new library project. So the total cost of the project has seen a 7% increase from last year's bond amount. So that works out to $4,734,617.32. That was recommended by our construction management firm, Bowen. They reported to us that some things have seen 3%, some have said 10%. They told us the best thing to do is say 7% across the board to cover any major or small changes that they have seen with the people that they subcontract their work with. And then, this is a question I'm putting back to the Select Board, also the ABC, is the warrant article, as I originally submitted it with our budget, was the total amount of the bond offset by foundation funds. And within some conversations that I've had with George and with Connor, the question came up with, "Do we report the total funds available by voting day in March? Do you want us to include funds available by the day we break ground in October 2020 when this passes?" So I guess that's one of the questions that's up for conversation tonight. I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add in, because those are two totally different numbers, because there's constantly donations coming in through the library, also what is sent directly to the foundation themselves, so, and the other grants. I know that the foundation has been applying for and that sort of thing, which I believe Roger may speak to later on. So just trying to get some guidance, because I know we have some deadlines coming up, and what would make the most sense?
So this is a conversation that started back a few meetings ago when the library presented some of the answers to questions Select Board members had, and really, it's the difference in collected money and committed money. And, you know, I supported then a determination early on, and certainly from the Select Board as putting this article on the warrant, is a determination of what that number should be, a collected number, so cash in the bank available to spend, versus a committed number, which is, you know, committed donations at the time of groundbreaking. And from my perspective, the only concern I would have is if the total project were approved and the bond amount, which is the total project cost less any other funding sources, which would be this collected or committed money. If committed money were used and a bond amount was approved, which turns out to be not the total amount necessary to complete the project based on any committed money that isn't collected, which is a possibility in fundraising, I would just want to make sure that the project had the funds necessary to proceed without making adjustments or alterations of what voters would support at their decision. So my recommendation at that time would be to use the best committed number, or best collected number possible, and, you know, the last time to update that number would be during deliberative session, so that's February 1st. And so, you know, working with the leadership of the foundation to find that collected number, and I think the library did an excellent job last year, will continue this year, indicating how much money is also committed in addition to that collected money. So, but again, I don't feel like it's my decision, I don't feel like it's the library's decision. The Select Board will be putting this bond request on the warrant, and I really feel like it's the Select Board's decision what number should be used there.
I'm of the mindset, I believe, collected money is the only thing you can use because committed doesn't actually mean that it will beans until it's in your pocket.
I would agree. I think the collected funds are the most important to bring forward so that we have an accurate picture of what potentially we could see for the total bond amount. The one other thing that I would just request, there was a portion of what was fundraised, and I should point out for anybody who's watching this, what was fundraised is remarkable, and it's an amazing amount that's both collected and committed from the public for this project. The one other thing that I would suggest with it, portions of that were used for portions of your work with this thus far. So I would just ask that the figure that we're presented with is cash on hand, by you, for the project, ready to go, so that when we present, we can support a total dollar amount that is completely accurate.
Maybe we should ask from the county at that particular time, prior to, a couple days prior to the deliberative session, so that we can have it on hand and know, so when it comes, the chair would be able to make the necessary changes at the deliberative session and inform the public.
Do we print material for the deliberative?
Yes.
And we do a PowerPoint as well? How, generally, when is that prepared? By two weeks ahead of time, a week ahead of time?
Well, I suspect that the library community will present the bond request as they did last year, and I imagine it would be able to be included in that presentation up until the meeting. It sounds like what George is requesting is maybe just a note from the treasurer of the foundation which indicates the amount of cash on hand in advance of deliberative session.
A lot of cash on hand and money expended that was collected.
So it sounds like an update of the numbers provided at that last meeting, or the meeting a few meetings.
Yeah. Whatever the net is that we can say, needs to go towards the 4.7. Yeah. I think, I think that whatever that net figure will be.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that that's, that's the approach.
Questions? I think we, do you have something you would like to add, Mr.? Would you please take your hat off? Just courtesy to everyone here. Thank you.
All right, the library community center will be open to all democratic, public, and independent functions?
As long as they abide by our meeting room policy.
And then after a year, there might be an impact on staff, on future budgets, going by the data.
For, right, we would reevaluate and look and see what would change from, you know, being in a new building, possibly experiencing, you know, a double, you know, circulation rates for, you know, we're just under 50,000 now. If we went up to 100,000, that's a lot of stuff to check out, check in, put back, and that sort of thing. So we'd have to reevaluate staffing. With the new space, you know, there may be the opportunity to bring in a young adult librarian versus, you know, having a children's librarian that does children's programming, young adult programming, and that sort of thing. You know, kind of reevaluating what everybody's roles are and best figuring out how we can provide services and support to all the people that use the library.
Can I just add a point to that, too? I think that it's due, you know, it's a good policy for all of the departments to, every year, pay, pay attention to those things. If whoever moves into our space, you know, is going to, if it were the rec, they would have more space, they may need more folks. You know, if there's suddenly a bunch of kids in the town that are going to play soccer, or I'm just using the rec as an example of the new town hall, but, you know, every year, we're always reevaluating that anyways. So I think that, yes, having a bigger space means we'll absolutely reevaluate that, but I think it's a point to be made that we should always be doing that.
And then I'm still confused on the, you're asking 4.7, you're seeing the 7% increase. Please forgive me, Bowen. Did they bid the plans to come up with that number? Did they bid the plans, did they come up with that number? Because at last vote, you asked for 3.9, and then if you do 7% of 3.9, I come up with 4.2, then you get 500,000.
3.9 was the number that included the money from the foundation.
Right.
So it would be.
But you went with 3.9.
I took the number from last year.
And added 7%.
And added 7%.
Yeah, but you went with 3.9 plus the 5. So now, if I do 7% on 3.9, I come up with 4.2, plus the 5, I'm at 4.7.
Right, so 4.2 plus what the foundation has raised would be that total 4.7.
Right, I follow that, but that doesn't add up. But then you asked for another 200, so I'm at 4.9.
What do you mean, that's a 200?
Another, or alcohol, maybe? Probably would be, um.
That's separate from my warrant article. That's something completely separate. Completely separate from what I submitted with my budget. This is my warrant article, warrant article request for a bond for the new library project. That's it. That's the 4.7.
Right.
Number.
So anything that's coming after us on the agenda tonight, perhaps, may be able to answer that question. But as far as the current library operating budget, this is our warrant article.
So is Bowen comfortable with those numbers off the plans?
They were given to us.
Thank you. George?
Just, just, just something for information is that you're looking to put 13,000 square feet approximately for the new building. And when you do that for your custodial FTE, that'll be approximately 1.3 FTEs you're going to need to clean that building. So it just, it just happened to come across, that's all.
I think Steve may, I'll mention it to Connor.
Steve?
I wanted to, uh, thank you for beginning to emphasize more of the community services component rather than the library. I think one of the things that has been, as I meet with people around town, basically for a library, this is way excessive. But for a community center, it perhaps meets different needs, obviously, that are just as justified as a library itself. And I would, I can have you consider rephrasing some of the things that you're doing. This is really going, when I look at the programs that you offer, and I went down, which is a community service, which is a library service, and a vernacular for the population, it's mostly community services. So communication would say, if you need a service, facility and library. Uh, and that would be more representative of what it really is that you offer. The second thing is, you've mentioned additional staffing that might be required. And if you're asking the, the, a bond issue which will have a tax impact, so it would increase in operating, but you should go along with a larger facility. So I would, would hope that you could, at the same time, you lay out what the annual impact on taxes would be to also include potential increases in staffing that would require to support that facility.
That would be difficult, though, I think, to, I think, I'm worried that we confuse people, um, to say, we, we might need extra people along the way. Um, for instance, like the town hall, like, you might need something, anybody might need something. And to be telling people that we might in three years need, um, another desk clerk, um, I feel like that's just confusing. Um, because we might in three years need a lot more things across the whole town. We might need more firefighters, more police officers. I don't, I mean, I get maybe the custodial part we could talk about.
Well, and I know historically, from chatting with the previous director, that there has always been some growth for both the operating budget and the staffing portion of our budget. But over the past few years, the staffing has kind of stayed level to accommodate keeping our operating budget from getting even bigger faster and having our budget drastically grow at once. I'm not talking about after year one, I'm going to ask for staffing, programming, and this. I'm going to evaluate everything, see how things have changed, and see what do we need to do to better improve our services to our library patrons, to our community members that use that building. And if it's a matter of coming up with a part-time position or another full-time position, that sort of, it's not gonna happen all at once in each, you know, in the very first budget go around with a new building. It's something that I really feel needs to have all that data to go with it, and then kind of see how things progress. Um, because I don't know how, if, you know, I can only base my guesstimate on what's happened in the past when the library doubled their space. We're, you know, tripling our space almost in this new building. So, you know, we really just have to know that there could be changes coming, but they're not gonna happen all at once. And really weigh out what the more important, most beneficial financial fiscal way to, you know, make sure that the new library building will be properly run and maintained.
And we discussed also, sorry, Emily. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I believe in fairness to what Steve is saying, really what he's saying is if you're tripling in size, your operating budget is going to see a, whether it's, uh, you know, a 30% increase or a 40% increase because your electric bill's gonna be bigger, your utility bills are gonna be bigger, your cleaning bills bigger. You're gonna have all these added impacts to it. He's just saying in fairness, we should have the ability to say, if we look at that, what would we quantify that out as is a reasonable amount? Is it 20% increase in, in those expenses? Is it a 30% increase in expenses? Um, and then, you know, knowing your plan on staff, hey, being transparent about the fact that we're expecting circulation to increase, which means we're going to be looking for more staffing to support that increased circulation, is, is just being fair and transparent to everybody, which I think is what he's asking for, and which I would ask for the same thing.
Right, and that's why I, I keep saying, you know, I'm not gonna just make, I mean, I can come back and say, okay, well, if we're gonna, you know, double our circulation, we'll need one part-time person to do this. But I also like to have that backed up by data. So if I can prove that we've had a, you know, double or triple increase in what we circulated and needing the extra position to, you know, free up somebody else to do a different portion of their job, you know, I'd rather, I mean, it's going to come at some point. I just don't know how and how much because we haven't spent some time in the new space and, and we haven't seen how that's going to impact us right now. Right, I'm, sorry.
Under, no, I was just gonna say, understandable. But when we, the one piece I would say is when we look at data, we draw, use data to drive decisions. And if, you know, based on your current circulation, you need X number of employees, and you're projecting a certain circulation or an increase in circulation based on the renovation of the library the last time that doubled it, and you're saying, okay, we're expecting this increase based on, like, data or sharing, since every library does this, you should have pretty good statistical data from other libraries that have built a new library and expanded to give that, which would also help quantify out what's your FTE, um, or part-time employee number is actually going to be. And then, I think Connor had something he would like to add as well.
Can I just add something before we move on to the next point? I think also that when we talk about our community center, we've had conversations around that maybe we, um, can totally revamp our volunteers. Uh, we have a lot of volunteers that come to the library right now and that they spend hours shelving books, doing things, in the building, and the exciting community center would be able to potentially have a, a larger volunteer program where people want to be a part of it, come in, and we can maybe be able to use some of those folks for some of these things, too.
I was just going to add, uh, the, the question about utilities came up. So, you know, right now, the Select Board, the town carries in the operating budget, the operating cost, the utility cost for the entire building, recreation and library. And so that, the library space, when vacated, will still be used, if not immediately, by recreation, there, there will still be utility costs. So the, the new library, the utility costs, uh, at such time that it's complete, uh, will have to be a conversation if that's something that the library will budget for strictly in their budget, uh, being in their own facility, or if it's something the town will contribute, uh, continue to fund in the general operating budget. Uh, and those are numbers that, you know, will have an increase. There, there will be utility costs associated. Even though it will be more efficient space than the current space, uh, it will be additional space. And so I imagine that the architects and engineers working on the project will be able to anticipate, uh, utility costs. And, uh, maybe if that's information that we can get out ahead of time, it would be valuable, uh, in the effort of the transparency , uh, Mr. Saunders is talking about. An anticipated utility cost, I imagine it will be incredibly efficient, and the utility costs will be much lower proportionally than the current space. Uh, but it will still be an increase. And like I said, that's a topic I anticipate the library trustees and Select Board will have to broach at such time the project's approved and, uh, preparing to move in, where that, those operating costs are coming from the operating budget and library budgets.
And it should be noted that November 6th and November 16th are community sessions that are coming up with SMP architecture. So Jason, um, who is the architect on our project, will be there to answer questions from the public. We would love for anybody to be there to ask some of these questions. Um, he obviously has done this a bunch with other towns and can probably give some really good information to you all.
Do you want to add the time and location of those?
Sure, they're at the Barrington Library, um, in the children's room. Um, November 6th, I believe, is it Wednesday night? Thursday night?
Wednesday night at 6:00 PM.
6:00 AM. And then the Saturday is the 16th?
That's 10:30.
10:30 AM. Yeah.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Tracy?
I appreciate that you included the state report with the life-size square footage and comparing other life terms. Um, I think the interesting thing for us to note is that Chester, whose population is close to half of us, um, half of our size, experiences just one quarter of the number of visits our library does. And Northwood, approximately half our size as well, uh, is closest to the amount of usage of a library, and that's still only half of the number of visits that the town of Barrington is currently experiencing at their local library.
Good information.
It really is quite fascinating to see how everyone compares. And you know, breaks it down to circulation, and circulation of what types of materials, and everyone has a per capita they list and all that other stuff. So there's some really good information in that state report that you can see historically.
I think, for me, it just indicates the efficiency in which you're functioning. That's pretty remarkable, four times the number of visits.
All right. Thank, thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Moving on, uh, Library Foundation, I believe that Mr. Gingrich will be speaking to this.
And then just to extend the point that was being made about that online, uh, information. That website is incredibly rich. It's in the spreadsheet, you can go in and manage the data yourself and do whatever analysis you want to look at. And, um, I encourage you to do that. So, I'm here tonight as president of the Barrington Library Foundation to briefly discuss our recently submitted warrant article request and the amount of $200,000 to be taken from the unassigned fund balance and placed in capital reserve fund. Recall that on September 9th, I presented to the Select Board answers to a number of your questions, as well as on the progress the foundation was making moving toward our goal of achieving, achieving a supermajority with the March 10 warrant article to build a new library and community center. The trustees and building committee have been working hard with SMP architects and building construction, uh, management to reduce the cost and size of this building in the face of that 7% increase in building cost from last year to this. And while those are critical endeavors, the details of which will be shared and discussed at those meetings that Lindsay and Melissa just noted, uh, on the 6th and the 16th, we continue to aggressively pursue our primary strategic goal of exceeding the 31% turnout for the March 12th, from the, uh, March 12th, uh, 2019 to March 10th this coming year. At a number of public venues, uh, embedded in this past, uh, summer and autumn, and with more planned, uh, this later autumn and winter, we've encountered an increasing number of committed and enthusiastic citizens who see the new library and community center as a high priority need that this entire community, uh, has. Those who openly oppose the library do so with statements like, "I don't think this town even needs a library." "I don't think this town can afford a new library." Or, "Our current library is big enough." A young father with a child at the Barrington Elementary School, PTA, uh, opened house last month at our library display, came to me as his young son was looking at our, uh, very famous now library model, uh, made by John Cuffasso, and said, "This is why poor people can't afford to live in Barrington." His dress and overall demeanor suggested he knew well of which he spoke. His comments spawned a very cordial conversation between he and I, which I pointed out to him that the anticipated 15-year bond would mean approximately $36 a year in tax impact, or 70 cents a week, uh, in new taxes on a $100,000 home. He thought for a second, rubbed his chin, and then he said, "Well, that's, that's something even I could afford," offering his hand in a handshake as he left. This has been our message. A new library and community center brings value to Barrington way, way beyond where books are stored. And this conversation we've just had highlights some of those things. If our residents had no town library and were forced to use other town libraries in the surrounding areas, estimate, estimated that they would be spending over a million dollars annually to get those same services, or they would simply be without. The library and community center is seen as essential to the fabric of our town. Young children meet each other for the first time as storytime, and socializing begins to take place. Teens have a place, young parents of those children also find new connections with each other. Teens have a place to gather for group projects. Older folks connect with newly discovered common interests. Groups of like-minded residents come together to learn. The common point being that if one is interested in acquiring new information, in learning to improve themselves, a high-quality library is absolutely essential. The majority of our citizens have told us that they want a new library. We heard that with the vote last, last March. And they liked the plans that were presented last year. We have worked diligently to address the cost and need considerations on behalf of both those who support us, as well as those who oppose our efforts. This warrant article of $200,000 offers our citizens an opportunity as an additional small part of our overall financial strategy. Will they support a $200,000 withdrawal from the town's unassigned fund balance, a move that was done last March for the town hall, to cover the bulk of the first year's repayment for the new library bond, when there will be overlap with the last payment for the Barrington Middle School, which expires, expires October 1st, 2022? We look forward to your strong and unequivocal support for this community project, which we feel is very important. Thanks.
Appreciate your presentation. We will take it under advisement with all the other warrant article requests. Thank you. Tracy?
If we're taking this under advisement, it becomes very important for us to see both the breakdown of that overall financial strategy that you've discussed, the full amount of the collected funds of support that had come through privately. And then, um, I will try and attend one of the two meetings, but I would appreciate it if you would report back to the Select Board what the, the cost and size decrease that you're expecting will be. One of the other warrant articles that's going before the people of Barrington has been a suggested increase in the elderly single tax exemption. One of the Barr- One of the barriers that we heard from people in the past is that those who might be most likely to use the library felt that it might be not cost affordable to them from a tax increase perspective. And so the select board has brought forward that change to the tax bill, which would ultimately provide some relief for those, again, most likely to use the library and those least likely able to contribute towards it. So I think that will become important to us.
Okay. Anyone on the advisory budget committee have any questions for Mr. Gingrich? Peter?
I think I concur with what Tracy was suggesting, that I'm very interested to see what Jason LaCombe and others could consider for trying to keep costs in line. Going up a few hundred thousand dollars certainly is a scary proposition. And I think it's detrimental to the success of what the library trustees want to do. So I truly think trying to sharpen the pencil and make sure we get a size and a cost that the town can accept is extremely important. And I speak not just as an ABC member, but as the treasurer of the town and a 10-year trustee of the library. So I think I have all the perspectives in mind. But I think when we get up to 4.7 million, we need to know exactly what the town is going to be responsible for cost-wise. And I think that's an extremely important criteria and it's something we want to make sure we address.
Mr. Bailey?
Thank you. What happened was on your, you went in and used $100,000. I think we should use the average home price here in Barrington. It's not everybody should add $100,000. I think it'd be more more the neighborhood of $300,000 and go with it. I think we have to, we just have to be open when we say how much it's going to cost. We support a lot of things, or I do, I support a lot of things. But one of the things we have to do for the rest of the individuals in town is to show them exactly what it is. And also when we do that, there's new figures that just came out from DRA. And I think you'll see that some of those new figures will have changed some of the figures that you came out with right now. So if we put all that together, we'll have everything that Tracy, the treasurer, has put together. So that's what we need to do.
So we respond, thank you for that. We've now for a couple of months had on our website, which we've been trying to push and promote, a table that actually expands that. We heard considerable pushback last year in using the $300,000 average cost. And and that came from people who were supportive as well as those who came to us with opposing views. And so what I've done on the website is to put a table there that says that if your house costs $50,000, if your assessment is this, then that's that's what you, if it's this much, 100, or if it's 250 or 300, it's in a table. So you can actually, you have to do the calculation, you actually get it done for you. And we're trying our best to meet everybody's needs as they look at these numbers.
I, Matt?
Matt?
I want you to know that I'm not here to go against the library at all. I'm here to say that in order to make more people aware of what's going on, it has to go more than just the website. Not everybody knows that information is there. And if you want to turn around and go per $100,000, that's fine. Just recently, we received figures from DRA that has increased the value. If you've got your tax notice, you'll see it minus 13.1% increase. And you'll see it right on there and you go from there. And so what I'm making a suggestion is you update the figures that you have, and I didn't realize you had that chart, get it ready so people can actually see what they're going to have to pay.
Sure.
Thank you.
I don't really want, I'm so battling with the numbers of once I have more data, 4.3, 4.2, 4.7, whatever, once I get more information from you soon, I'll better understand it. And you guys keep on referring to the school bond's going to be up.
October 1, 2022.
But the way the school bond's been going, the pay raises and stuff, and then just the cost, the 3% cost of living, there's going to be no savings in that. So you can't really count that as an extra money, law, because that's already disappeared. And then when the tax bill comes up, there's going to be a big, I might as well say, there's going to be an increase in their percentage. So we're going to get hit there. So, but if you break down that bond and go over and see how the school budget has raised, that's the cost of living, 3%, there's going to be no savings. Once that bond's paid off, you're not going to see any savings at all. You're going to see an increase. Hope there is.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on. First of two public comments, just a reminder, there's a three-minute maximum. Microphone yours.
Good evening. Thanks very much for this forum. I think Melissa did a wonderful job. I think we shall be really pleased at the thoroughness of that. I'm just here to say, Marie Harris Lowes Lane, that I want to just talk in a general way rather than speak about budgets and that sort of thing right now. I just want to remind people, and I think that George and Dawn and to some extent Tracy remember well, and I'm going to speak about buildings in this town that have to do with both our town buildings and our school buildings, because the tax bill actually comes out of the same pocket. And I remember well when the elementary school was proposed and we had naysayers upon naysayers. We don't need a new elementary school. In fact, some of the naysayers are still the same naysayers. And a lot of people got behind it. We ended up with an elementary school, but we needed really badly. The next thing that happened was, and I remember George Lovejoy, who was very conservative fiscally, he and Charter went up to the old middle school that we're standing in right now. And Charter said, "George, I just want you to look at this school right now." And he came with Charter and they wore backpacks in the hall, they wore backpacks in the lavatories, there were kids in custodial closets being tutored. And George Lovejoy said, "Yeah, yeah, we need this." And he stood behind it. And we got a new middle school, which is the pride, I think, the pride of this of this community. Moving right along, we had a fire department. Let me remind that the police department was up in what's now our library. We had a fire department that now houses a chiropractor and an ad agency. That was our fire department. And there were people who said, "We do not need another fire department, a new building." And I remember Dick O'Brien came to me because Charter and I ran an advertising agency and said, "Can you help with the PR? Can you help tell our citizens why we need a new public safety building?" And there were lots of naysayers, same naysayers. "We don't need a new public safety building." Well, we worked and we worked and we worked and and we got a new public safety building. And now what I'm saying is the last thing, I think, that this town needs is a community center that serves the needs of people who don't have a place in this town together. Young people, old people, teenagers, people all across the board. And what I'm asking you to make is that you, the select board, and then by extension, the voters of this town, do what they've done before and stand up for what we need. Stand behind it 100% as Matt Ten said a couple of meetings ago, no daylight between you and this decision. This is the last major building that this town needs to be, a cohesive community school/town. And I'm just asking passionately that this is the time for you to stand up and say, "This is what we need. We can do a little backs and forths about..."
Ms. Harris. If you could, you're over time already by a minute. If you could please be respectful of that, just give you a minute to close your comments.
Thank you. I don't have the stopwatch here. So anyway, what I'm saying is that I think I need, we need you to stand behind us 100% vocally out there in the community. And this is the last major building that this town needs to be, a proper community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey, it's public comment.
Did I do it from here or do I need to get it?
Bye.
Thank you. My public comments are to address the board and my displeasure of what happened last week. I did not, right now, it is going to go with the $250 extra on it. Charter explained to me how the vote was taken and how it was changed, and he will explain that further. But the part that bothers me is the fact that it's going to take care of 34 other people in this town, and the cost for that would be $70,000 total, and that would raise it to 140. That would be for, as I said, 100% disabled vets and give them that money. Some of the figures that were brought together for dollars and what have you, I don't agree with, and I'm not here to get a contest going. But I just want to let board members that were present here last week understand my displeasure and not supporting it. But the other part that I will bring up for dollars that goes right now is that there's 163 people that receive the elderly exemption and the with restrictions. And also there's one veteran that's in it that receives the subsistence that goes with it. But it totals out to be $11,398,227 worth of property that this is all built on. And so my comment is the fact is it goes right down to an additional $70 was not asking too much. And I understand, because the board works like I do on making cuts in the budget and what have you, and ensuring the town doesn't have added expenses. But it just happens to be a pet project of mine, and I appreciate you listening to me, but I didn't appreciate your vote. So I just want to say that publicly to everyone and thank you. Maybe next year when the time comes or when I hand in a, if I get, I need more signatures, a petition warrant article, it will happen, it will be discussed. But again, I understand how we all work together. It just, I felt that I should have been able to do it, being the second oldest on the board, so I can go from there. You weren't here, so it made me the oldest. Thank you very much and please, thank you.
Mr. Bailey, I believe you mean Carter, not Charter.
Connor.
Connor, not Charter.
Why, it's correct. Oh, I'm sorry.
Tough crowd.
Forgive me for doing that. I hope that Tiffany will make that correction for me. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, closing public comment. Administrator McIvers report?
All right. Carter.
Jokes, jokes, all jokes.
That's Carter. Thanks, Alan. Sorry. Hey, turn about.
Hang on, two, 10,000 comedians out at work and you're making jokes. Come on.
So most of what I have tonight to share is actually just information. We have a few items on the agenda, which I'll also speak to. The first item you'll see in your packet, the new rates for our Primex insurance. So that's our property liability, unemployment compensation, and workers' compensation. I will add that there are a couple of outstanding questions that the chair and I discussed, which I'll have back from Primex this week, I anticipate. And I'll share that information with the board when I receive that. One relates to how our property values increased about 22%. I believe it's in relation to the five-year update that Primex does, separate from the revaluation. And then the other question was in regards to our workers' compensation loss adjustment factor, or no, I apologize, our unemployment compensation loss ratio for 2019 being 237%. So I will bring information back to the board when I have more information, but you have copies of the rate details.
Mr. Harris?
To clarify this, these member contributions, usually we were around 60 grand, I thought, at all, now we're up to 64, 66. If you look on the contribution. So if you add these up, we're going to close that, so there's other parts of contribution that costs us, we're around 66 now.
So workers' compensation, our total contribution based on payroll is 66,000.
Right. And then we got 3 grand, and then we got 60. So are we spending 120 grand a year on insurance or?
So for the Primex, the insurance that we secure through Primex, property liability, unemployment compensation, workers' compensation, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If there are no other questions?
Tracy? Primex allow us, isn't it, I realize it's an exchange on an actual insurance company. Are we allowed to submit any type of managerial loans for a reduction? For instance, when I'm buying liability insurance for a business and I can say, you know, senior executive holds a senior certified human resource professional certificate, why happy, it allows me to buy down 15% of what the rate would be. And I'm wondering if the exchange allows things like that based on maybe the expertise of the town administrator, the expertise of other people within our, you know, I think of John, what he holds for the number of certifications and things like that for his position. We have some very well-qualified employees. Does the potential exist to buy down the rate?
I'm not specifically aware. I'll certainly ask. There is a, they do offer a program for, the prime program that's listed, there are programs that help contribute to things like that. Not that I'm aware the town participates in at this time, but I'll research that for sure.
Things that may be worth.
Absolutely. Can you? Mr. Harris?
My understanding is there's only like three, two or three vendors we go to. There's not a big pool of vendors, I must tell you. So it changes, it could be higher.
Yeah, that's true, like nonprofit work too. There's three or four vendors that will insure them, but I just thought if the possibility exists and we haven't explored it, maybe we should base it on the rates.
Great to hear that.
So moving on, the next item is the SEM sites update. This was requested by the board a couple of meetings ago. So right now, the biggest burden, the biggest hurdle has been data input, data transfer. So about 35% of the records, old records, have been brought into the system. We actually reprioritized the rollout to turn on the front-facing portion where the public's able to make inquiries of available lots and the burials. And we anticipate having that on and available to the public in spring of 2020 by the time the cemetery opens again. And we'll continue to input the backlog of data, but prioritizing turning the program on front-facing based on the board's feedback of we're paying for this software, we should be, the public should be able to utilize it. And so it won't have all of the historical data available at the time it's turned on, but that will continue to be input as appropriate as time permits.
So something I, one of the things that I didn't ask when I had spoken with you earlier about it, is if we, we're talking about 35% being in there and we're talking about quantifying out about how long it would take. Excuse me, is if we know we have 1,400 records or 1,000 records to input and it takes approximately, say, 20 minutes a record or 30 minutes a record, depending on what that is, then we can kind of extrapolate out what our expected time is to implement this, and then we can do a percentage track as to how we're doing on that, based on that.
I definitely agree with that sentiment and would like to work in that direction. One of the hurdles to that... One of the hurdles to that, not insurmountable, is that the data's in various formats. And so quite frankly, the part that takes time isn't the data input verification. It's the organization, which varies significantly based on how the data was originally recorded. So we are continuing to work in that direction. We weren't able to get that for this update. But like I said, I share that sentiment.
Yeah, because my general thought is, if we take a worst-case scenario, we can figure out a rough timeline and how long, you know, if you know you need to enter, if it takes half an hour, an hour, then, and you're entering two a week, or five a week, one a day, then this is your built-out timeline to get it done.
Crazy.
Total cost of SEM sites, software was what?
I do not know.
Right. 1,600?
If you go to the cemetery budget.
Yeah.
If you look under contracts.
Okay.
Whatever the number is over the $10,000 figure from last year, that'll tell you what it is.
That's the cost to buy it was just $1,600, or to use it annually?
That's for the annual fees.
Okay. So it's a cloud-based product, and we're just paying the annual fees?
Yes.
Okay. And then have we considered utilizing a UNH data entry or something like that?
Great. Thank you.
So the board was offered an opportunity to pay for data entry at the time the software was purchased. And I believe the recommendation was to purchase it with data entry, and the board turned down that option, is what I understand.
I don't know if that was the recommendation. I think originally the plan was, is we, because we had hired on the administrative assistant, and the administrative assistant at that time, that was just going to be part of their role to go in and enter that data. And that was what was agreed upon. We said, "Yes, we would support that decision to save on the cost of the cemetery software." So the board was not against doing the data entry. That was the recommendation that was put before us.
My misunderstanding. I can certainly explore that option if there's support from the board.
Yeah. So I think utilizing a UNH intern is a fabulous idea. It gives them some exposure to list on their resume someday, and it usually gives us some really bright, energetic young person with the ability to get a lot of information into a computer system pretty quickly.
George, and then Dan.
I would like to, that was part of what I was going to bring up, was hiring somebody else to come in. I think it's a wonderful idea, and if the chair would ask for or entertain a motion on that case, and we could, or at least further input to be there for what the charges would be, would be a tremendous idea.
I, since we're meeting weekly right now, I say we figure out what we're looking at for time and data, and then we'll talk about a motion to do that afterward would be my suggestion.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray.
Nothing against UNH or anything, but down to P's, isn't it the Great Bay? It sounds like college growing pretty big down there. Do they have any options like that down there?
Actually, there's options everywhere.
Oh, I'm not sure of the name of it though.
Is it the Great Bay, is that the community college option here? Great. Moving on.
It's Great Bay.
Okay.
Bye, my tone. So the next item is additional details regarding the revaluation. So I have in your packet, and for folks in the audience and at home, it's linked to the homepage of the website, a frequently asked questions regarding the revaluation. I won't go into a lot of detail presenting this tonight. A lot of the information has already been covered. But some of the questions that this document answers is what a revaluation is, why it's done, how property values have changed on average across the board, how you can view your updated property card information, including the details, and verify that, why a certain property may have seen increases above or below the average, the fact that the revaluation does not include an interior assessment of the property at this time, but how you can schedule that, what to do if you disagree with an assessment, and how to go about the abatement process if necessary, what the new tax rate will be, how... And I will spend just a second on this because I believe that it's important. So the select board and community has often heard that there are certain roads that the town doesn't maintain, and the impact on the tax rate of folks that don't receive certain services, or a portion of some services, should be taken into account. So I just wanted, speaking factually, I wanted to make sure the board and community were aware that if a resident lives on an unmaintained classics road, so a road that the town owns but doesn't maintain, this is your Swain Road, this is...
Linnis.
No, that's a private road.
No, you said unmaintained town road.
Unmaintained classics. I don't know why I'm drawing a blank. I'm more unmaintained.
A portion of Brooks Road.
A portion of Brooks Road, yeah, Keller, thank you.
End of Smo.
End of Smoke Street. So those roads that are gravel roads, unmaintained by the town, but under town ownership, the land value on those properties, on those portions of the road are reduced 10% as a result of where they are. Now, the goal of the assessment is still to achieve fair market value, but our assessor has identified that there are certain market factors which contribute to the market price, such as living on an unmaintained road. And so in addition, regardless of if the town maintains the road, or it's privately maintained, anybody that lives on a gravel road in town, the land value of their property is reduced by 5% based on the, again, attempting to identify those market factors which adjust the value. And so I did some math to help folks understand where their taxes go. And so the, in 2018, $25 million was accrued by voters to be raised by taxation. $4 million of that was for the town, $18 million for the school, and $2.7 million for the county. So the town's portion of taxes folks paid in 2018 was 17% of the tax rate. And so the highway department budget specifically dedicated to road construction and maintenance is 28% of the town's total budget. So factoring that through means that about 4.75% of taxes residents paid went towards the construction and maintenance of our roads. So if you figure at a minimum, somebody that lives on a gravel road, the land value of their property is reduced 5%, and even more so if they live on an unmaintained class six road. I believe that the town is adequately compensating for the market factors which exist there. Not to mention that it's pretty difficult to traverse through Barrington and not touch a road that is maintained by the town. So I think that information's important to be shared, and that's also in here for folks if they're interested. Finally, there's a long note on what assistance is available, summarizing all of the exemptions and credits which the town offers and those limits, which I think is really valuable for folks that see this information that their taxes, their assessment has been raised, and their taxes are likely to increase, and maybe they fall into one of these categories and can utilize a program that's available to them. So again, this information's available on the front page of the town's website. Select board members have copies, and I would urge anybody that's speaking to the revaluation or the tax rate to reference this document, and point folks in the direction of factual information and not speculation. Mr. Ray.
One thing that doesn't really identify too, like I live on a state road. Those law do live around 4, Route 25, Route 9. And we get taxed for, and we not get anything from the town. So there's a big majority of people that receive nothing from the town because they have a state property. And we're getting taxed at full value.
And I think that's why it's important to do the math about, you know, so to hear you say that you don't get anything from the town. So if you are specifically on the road part, if you, the math is that 4.7%, 4.75%, quite a small fraction of the taxes you pay, go towards road maintenance at all. So, you know, I think folks that pay for trash pickup, there's a portion of their taxes that aren't, that they're not directly benefiting from. Not to mention that folks that do live on state highways utilize roads maintained by the town and benefit from the quality and passability of our roads, especially in the winter. So I don't dispute that there, that maybe you don't directly on a daily basis benefit from the use of town roads, but at 4.75%, and the fact that you benefit from all other roads in town, I think that's important information to share.
Ms. Hartle, I just wanted to note that a 12, or 15, or 30% increase in valuation does not indicate a 12, 15, or 30% increase in taxes, as someone who recently moved to this town indicated on a Facebook page recently. And I appreciated that other residents of the town went out of their way to correct what they termed misinformation.
Mr. Ray, just a reminder that when we look at the budget, we have the school portion, we have the town portion, we have the county portion, and we have the state portion. So that would take care of that portion that we pay, will also take care of the state roads that have been out of here, we also have our tax dollars. So it's all lined up there.
Yep. Mr. Ray.
Thank you for clarifications, as identifying a majority of the people in town.
Can you explain it better than me?
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the next item is the Stonehouse Forest Trails. On Saturday, October 19th, SALT held a grand opening ceremony for the newly developed Stonehouse Forest property. I included a map in everybody, in the select board members' packet. It's also linked on the town's website and available for anybody that's interested. There's many new miles of trails and a beautiful property available to our residents. Next item is I wanted to make sure the board was aware of the press release regarding the Chamber of Commerce annual dinner. It will be held on November 9th at 5:30 p.m. Registration is $40. The deadline to register is October 31st. And very exciting is that the Chamber of Commerce voted to select the Barrington Trails Committee as the District of the Year, based on the work that they've done. And also Cornerstone VNA is the Business Leader of the Year. For your information. I, select person Bailey drew attention to this earlier. So I was reviewing the minutes from the last select board meeting on October 21st, and I realized that a motion invoked made by the board was not handled as though it passed real time, but it did actually pass based on the abstention that was recorded. And so in New Hampshire, as a way to discourage folks from abstaining and not taking a stance, an abstention reduces the vote, the total vote count, and how a majority affects the decision of that vote. So at that meeting, there was a motion to increase the service connected to total disability exemption for the warrant to 2,550. And when a vote was called, two members voted in support, one member voted against, and one member abstained. So that, the result of that is that two members, the majority of those who voted, supported that motion. And so it was recorded that it passed. And I will, from now, move forward treating that motion as a pass, preparing a warrant article for the warrant this year at an increase of 2,550, unless I have any further direction from the board. I do apologize that it wasn't picked up as a pass motion in real time during the meeting. Again, I just want to make sure that you're specifically aware, and that I will be moving forward treating that as a pass motion unless there's further action. Mr. Ray.
I, as I recall, I never abstained. I didn't take a stand on it. So as soon as I vote, it would be no. I never said I'd abstain, that I will not take a stand on this, because of transparency, and then I've now had one public call for not taking a stand as an abstention.
All right. If you'd like to make a motion for consideration by the board to change the decision that was made, that you're certainly within your right to do so. Okay. Moving on. At the last meeting, I let the board know that map 223, Lot 29, was offered to the town. It's a 6/8 commercial lot along 125. The select board expressed interest in accepting that lot, but wanted to make sure the developer was aware that as long as substitute road was updated, upgraded to the town's standards, a driveway could be achieved off that lot for commercial development. And the developer's well aware, the cost to do so is cost prohibitive for the value of the lot, doesn't intend to do so, and again, felt that the lot was of most value to the town to do so as they pleased at whatever point in the future. So the, as the board knows, that land has to be acquired through the RSA 4114A process. The first step of that process is consideration and recommendation from the Conservation Commission and Planning Board. So in your packet, I have the public hearing packets for both of those, the land acquisition that was recently offered, and the land acquisition for the town hall. And you'll see that the schedule is that the first public hearing before the select board will be November 18th, and the select board vote will be December 16th. So these documents will be circulating to the appropriate groups and coming back to the board for consideration November 18th. The one issue that the select board will still have to consider, and we don't have to do so tonight, is the outstanding $4,700 in the land use change tax and one and a half of the property tax bill. If the town is interested in accepting this property, the options would be to abate the taxes, or make it as a condition that the taxes be paid prior to acquisition.
So that would be my question. Is this something we're actually interested in acquiring back, or do you want a parcel?
Mr. Ray.
It does have value to the towns I stated for, for a well, for a station area, and for the upgrades of substitute old mail road, whatever you want to call it.
But it doesn't have access unless you go through Lot 22.
No, I'm wrong.
Value of lot. We had offered it to purchase. Chestnut Woods was originally going to buy it, and then never processed through on transaction on it.
Can I ask the town lands committee what they think?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I'm wondering if we've asked the town lands committee what they think.
Not yet.
So is the recommendation to consider acceptance upon discussion from town lands, planning board, and conservation commission?
Mr. Bailey.
I have a question. Would we do a lot change to make it all one piece?
I would not recommend that unless the board only intends to ever treat those as two separate lots. It could be that the value of Lot 22 is of the highest value at the time substitute road is ever upgraded, and could be available to whoever upgrades it. Whereas the Lot 29 might be of highest value sometime after substitute road is upgraded, and the town would be well within their right to sell that lot to a commercial developer once the road's updated.
Thank you for the information.
Mr. Ray.
And the town lands could give feedback on it, and the value of that law, selling it, could go towards the upgrade of that road, offset on taxpayers. And we still combine that law, upgraded substitute, and sold that law after the fact of the usage of a station area, the value of that could go towards the cost of the improvements of that.
You understand? I know what you're saying. So lastly, is the question around the taxes, abating the taxes, and land use change tax?
Is it the same rule? So I'm of the mindset we should abate the tax should we take that property?
Okay. And the land use change tax as well?
Yes.
How does the rest of the board feel?
Well, I think we should... I'll go with whatever the board is. I don't like the idea of abating the taxes because they are due to us from different entity, and I think we should at least attempt to collect it. If we don't collect it, then we're going to end up taking the property. So either way, we're still going to end up with it. We're not going to get our money. That's...
I think we should, I think we should do the housekeeping and clean enough to abate the taxes.
I agree. But I'd still, you know, it's just the idea of giving up that money. But so, if that's the consensus, I would go along with it.
Mr. Ray.
It's cheaper now than later.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
I would make a motion to abate the taxes and the land use tax as well.
So we can take that vote at the time the board acquires it because there will be interest that will accrue, so we can get the exact number for the board's consideration. And I anticipate that being at the December 16th meeting.
I'm assuming we can do the motion now, though, with just saying, with the adjusted amount upon completion of acceptance of the public here.
That's okay.
the adjusted amount upon completion of acceptance of the public hearing, completion of public hearings.
I'll give you the most up-to-date number.
I don't even know if we need the number.
Okay.
One second, Ed.
Okay.
Ehren.
Bailey.
Hatch eye.
Hardicoff eye.
Nap eye. One last thing to do in the future. If I put off tomorrow, we can do today.
Great. And you will sign the abatement form, which will have the exact amount on it, so you will know that before executing your statement.
Thank you for the details on that. That was a complete packet. I appreciate it.
Great. Well, Mr. Ehren?
So that's all of the information I had to share in my report. Like I said, there are additional items in the agenda. I did want to let the community and board know some somber news. Two days ago, a former select board member serving a term in the 70s, Richard Burrows, passed away. So thoughts to his family at this time, longtime Barrington resident, a member of the fire department, and like I said, a select board member for a term in the 70s.
He was in the 80s also. He served for the.
And in the 80s. Multiple-term select board member.
I would also like to make the recommendation that we put together a card and.
Thank you.
Send a card.
Outstanding.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I, I will turn it over to Municipal Office Administrator Clark.
Thank you, Connor. Is that what you mean, right? For your signature tonight, I have the 18th summary check register, 201984, four period ending 10/23/19. Here will manifest 2019-87, and one deed with no covenants returning the property to previous owner following payment of all taxes owed. That's all.
All right. Review of minutes for October 21st. And we do have some corrections that Tiffany will introduce into the record for the board's consideration. And it is the board's option to consider and vote on those changes at tonight's meeting or receive a full updated copy and consider approving the minutes at the next meeting.
There's a few here. In first paragraph, the addition of Mr. Bailey, Select Person Bailey, as present. In the budget presentation for the police department, the addition of a link to follow along the current presentation if it had been uploaded but not linked in the minutes. On page three, the addition of a reference by Select Person Hardicoff to the federal aid and tax exemptions available to 100% disabled veterans. And then on page four, the clarification that Chief Walker had requested the select board support the Fire Department Vehicle Committee's recommendation of a cab and chassis manufactured by Brightliner. And the, allowing the Fire Department to move directly towards requesting sealed bits, not quotes. That's on page four, sorry. And then on page eight, motion to seal non-public minutes by Chair Person Nap was not included initially, and also you are not Select Person Nap, you are Chair Person Nap in that final adjournment line. So lots of red pen on that one this time, I'm sorry, guys.
Motion? Or any other changes before a motion?
Motion to accept the meeting minutes with the expressed changes.
Seconded.
Ehren.
Bailey.
I abstained with a request of here.
Hardicoff eye.
Nap eye.
Thank you.
That means you're voting for.
Under old business, there was the recommendation on the clerk of the works, which was discussed at the, um, the Town Building Committee meeting. The recommendation was to not use a clerk of the works, but look at using the, uh, the folks who have taken part in the building committee to provide support and reference to Administrator MacIver through that process.
I wanted to let you know in reading this that I appreciated the idea of having scheduled visits and that Select Persons and other people volunteering in the capacity of the building committee should not be visiting on-site during the build other than the scheduled visits. I think that's appropriate in order to accomplish the project of timely manner.
Is there a vote? A motion for a vote?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
So what's listed in the report is the, the recommendation from the building committee was to assign the town administrator as the owner's representative and not award the proposal for clerk of the works. At the top of page two. Is that the motion?
Yes, so Andy has presented.
But you said about visiting.
Right, now I'm just reading outside of the recommendations from the building committee that were referenced to this.
Yes, what Tracy's saying is that we had requested that, the conversation with the building committee was made that we would have scheduled times to visit the site, not just people showing up at random and slowing down or prohibiting progress for the builders while they're working. Do you have any idea of the scheduled time, Jeff? No, I would say we haven't made a designation at this point.
Multiple deals were talked about, weekly or bi-weekly meetings. I think the closest we were making decisions is incorporating the scheduled visits with the construction schedule. So there will certainly be some times where weekly meetings won't be productive because not a lot will change, but trying to coincide those scheduled meetings when activities are happening on-site that the group might be available to. And I think at any time, the select board or building committee could request a scheduled visit and happen in a formal capacity in that way.
So the motion before us is that the town administrator will be the primary project leader, correct?
Correct.
Primary project contact, yes.
And there was a second on that?
Yep.
Okay.
Discussion?
Still discussion.
Nothing gives Connor anything, transparency and stuff. Maybe you should bring someone along with him and stuff for observation and then just cover us, our butts. So we're very transparent, and then more than, no, I'm saying, I'm not questioning you. Will you allow us, uh, somebody to back you up?
I don't think it's necessarily.
I agree, it's not necessary.
We hired the man with the ability to do his job, and as far as I'm concerned, that's part of his job, and I don't think he needs to be micromanaged.
Any other discussion?
Move the motion.
Motion is seconded. It's already seconded?
Oh, sorry.
I seconded it. Bailey, aye.
Hatch eye.
Wait a minute, I didn't take the time, I don't.
Ehren.
Thank you.
So what else, Jeff?
Miss Hatch?
I said, aye.
Hardicoff eye.
Nap eye. All right. The Tax Record Preservation Grant, which I believe is also known as the Moose Plate Grant, if you'd like to move in any more on that.
So the board might remember quite a few months ago, the tax collector applied for this grant, received a portion of what she applied for, but enough that will preserve one of our oldest tax records for, into the preservation program, in the amount of $3,705. And the select board is asked to accept this grant of $3,705.
Motion to accept the grant for $3,705 and to thank the employee for taking the time to apply for it.
And so I'll second it.
And then just for, um, just because I know it's one of the things I'd ask, would you elaborate on how the Moose Plate Grant actually works, what the funds are used for? Sorry, I'm probably putting you on the spot because I should have prepared.
Yeah, so I'll tell you what I know, and I'm happy to follow up if you'd like additional information. So the Moose Plate Grant Program funds a lot of initiatives. That was also a partial funding source for the goodwill expansion. They secured monies through that program. Specifically, this is awarded by the State Library and the opportunity to preserve records. Sometimes it's for the actual preservation, sometimes the funds also go towards a display cabinet. The amount that was requested for the town was to preserve three of the old manifest records and just for the preservation, not for display. So the funds, which we were quoted by a preservation company, the 3,700, just covers the cost of, of one. So there would be no additional cost to the town in preserving.
Agreed. So hoping further preserve and retain our records well into the future for maybe at some point, display at a later point in time.
I'm sure they have a mission, and I will search it out and let you know.
So I know every year we do it, we preserve a little bit more, a little bit more, so how do we, how do we, we take that preservation and actually bring it to life for people's, a piece that I'm always interested in?
Definitely.
We'll call vote?
Ehren.
Bailey.
Hatch eye.
Hardicoff eye. Nap eye. All right. The Goodwill Conservation Easement deed, everyone should have gotten updated notes on that from the state making amendments and changes to the documents. Comment?
Based on the information that was provided, should we be bringing this back before our legal group just for one final blessing now that these changes have gone into this?
I think that's a question for you. I don't, I reviewed the changes that were made. It's consistent with anything NHDES provides funding for. They require this language, which essentially specifically highlights the priorities that they give money for, talking about community water supply, the referencing the fact that a portion of the funds came from DES, referencing the sovereign immunity of the state. So I didn't see them as anything that would be impactful to the town's ownership of the property. Some of it has additional requirements for self, as the easement, conservation easement holder, but if they were comfortable with the additional requirements, I didn't see changing the town's impact. But it's certainly a question to you, I'd be happy to submit the changes to the town's council if you find appropriate.
Mr. Ehren?
It is my understanding now, all the surveys have not been completed yet. So it's a little, it's almost done, it's almost complete, it's begun. That's my understanding.
Any other commentary from the board? How would the board like to proceed? Do you want to go back before the attorney, or is everyone comfortable with the changes requested from the state?
I'm comfortable, Mr. Chairman.
I'm comfortable.
I'm comfortable with it.
Do I have a motion, then?
I'll make the motion.
Is that a second?
I'll second it.
And a vote?
Ehren.
Bailey, aye.
Hatch eye.
Hardicoff eye.
Nap eye. All right. New business, administrative, Recreation Administrative Assistant regrading. My general commentary on it is that I know we've talked about holding off on regrading positions until we completed our reevaluation of all of the positions as a whole, so.
I specifically asked the question if the regrade to align this with other administrative assistants, was that based on the essential position functions or simply on the title? And I was thinking in reference to the recommendation from the compensation task force that asked for 10 factors instead of 14 in the evaluative process of where a position fell in the range. This position clearly, in, in my mind, doesn't have the same financial impact as some other administrative positions. So that was my, my first take on that.
Yeah, I really appreciated that feedback, and I also appreciated the suggestion to use those rating factors. And so I did that, and so for the board's benefit, the 10 rating factors talk about knowledge, training, and education, experience, complexity of the position, guidelines and support, interactions with others and communication, the physical demands of the job, work environment, what's, what independent action is allowable, the supervisory responsibilities, and the consequence of error in the position. And so what I did is I picked two administrative assistant positions that are graded at the grade 16, early grade 14, I apologize, and worked to see where this position fell in comparison to those. The two I compared, and again, this is subjective, I compared it to the building and assessing administrative assistant position and also the municipal office administrator position. Those are two positions on this grade that's being proposed. And what I found that when compared to the building and assessing administrative assistant, it was equal to seven of the factors. I felt it was equal in the same ballpark for seven of the factors, but less than the building and assessing position on three of the factors. And so to Select Person Hardicoff's point, using these rating factors, three out of the seven, in my estimation, offered less of an impact than the building and assessing administrative assistant role. For the municipal office administrator, I found that it only scored equal on four of the, of 10 rating factors and less than on six of the factors. So again, I really appreciated that suggestion, and that's what I found based on my review. The compensation study will also review the rating factors and review the position. My intent in bringing this before the board tonight, this is a position that's been vacant on and off since April, and in, before hire, before starting the hiring process for a new position, I thought it was important to evaluate the position as a whole, evaluate the job description, evaluate the hours, evaluate the grading. The only thing that I felt like wasn't perfectly in sync was the grading. Graded on a grade 12, I didn't feel was consistent across the community. I think Select Person Hardicoff pointed out a good point, which is consistency in title and consistency in job functions are two different things, and I think the rating factors answers to that. But I, I would hope that the board would consider making that change prior to advertising, regardless of whether the select board supports a change, will advertise the position and try to get a qualified candidate in.
Could you tell me what the range for, a range 13 is?
I can, if you give me just one second. And I used 2019 approved wages, not 2020, so I'll do the same for grade 13. Grade 13 starts at 1557 per hour and tops out at 1917 per hour.
Based on the exploration that you did in reference to the essential position functions and how that's now been calculated, would it make more sense to move this to a range 13 and then wait for the actual compensation consultants to come back to listen to this?
I could definitely support that.
So I would make a motion that we move the administrative assistant for the Recreation Commission according to the Director of Recreation from a range 12 to a range 13.
One second. Discussion? Nap eye. Hardicoff eye.
Hatch eye.
Bailey, aye.
Ehren.
All right. Last on our new business, the re, um, request for revaluation exemption, tax credit details to be included in the tax bill, the December tax bill.
I would make a motion that we expend up to $500 to include the revaluation exemption credit details in the tax bills going out for December.
I was to read most of that. It's going to be postage, excuse me.
No, actually, it's just the printing. It's eight cents a page to print it and include it. We're already paying the postage.
Right, there's no increase in the postage, the added paper.
It'll still be under announced.
Okay. So we have a motion, is that a second?
Second.
Vote?
Ehren.
Bailey, aye.
Hatch eye.
Hardicoff eye.
Nap eye.
And I will have a draft of that before the board, just for your review before we finalize it. I appreciate your support on that.
I appreciated that you gave a very good explanation of the revaluation process so that any taxpayer can go to the town site and review in detail what has happened with their home values.
Absolutely. I spoke to the chair in advance, I, I do have one item that's not on the agenda, I'd like to introduce a new business if there is an objection.
I have no objection to it.
So the cemetery trustees became aware that there's abandoned remains that were sent to the Cremation Society that have been abandoned, they have ties to Barrington. The cemetery trustees will likely vote to accept those remains and bury them in town. and bury them in town. The request to the select board is to waive the cost of a cremation site for that purpose. So, that is a decision that has to be made by the board.
Mr. Air?
That's a little money, is it?
Yes.
$2.50?
Mr. Bailey?
Do we... And I'm not asking for it. I'm just asking, has the... Is there identification with it?
No. To the unmarked grave.
I do.
I'll make a motion to waive the...
Do we know who the abandoned remains are?
Based on the birth and death, it's a baby.
Thank you.
Mr. Air?
Did you make the motion?
I did.
I'll second it. Air I.
Bailey I.
Hatch I.
Article five.
Now, bye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is that going to include this guy?
No. I think that's what I paused for. I would like to see it not go unmarked.
Let's just, you know, just little hearts and flowers or something like that, you know? Something sweet.
I can explore and come back to the board with options.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
We can place a marker for less than $275 on a grave.
I'll be honest, I would personally donate the money.
Makes two of us would work together.
Mr. Air?
There's a new person in town. I bet you'd want to donate something small.
Well...
I can accept...
So, I'm going to ask, why don't we ask the board if it would be okay to approach a private organization for that? Otherwise, we can actually order a marker on... Can order anything online, folks? We can order a marker. I just, if we're going to respect these remains and place them and inter them, I really would like to see us make this.
I plan to consult the cemetery trustees and bring options back to the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Air, Select Person's report.
You really want it? Well, I was kind of frustrated, disappointed. Sad here at the town lands committee. We spent a lot of time evaluating the founder forester for the town. Conservationists failed to do that. And we've done that. Now, they're questioning then the intent of the forester. And we hired a very unqualified guy and stuff. So, at the last hour, they want he give a... Basically, $10 and they got estimate on agents. Kind of like we're playing, giving options, what to do. And now, they're all worried, going to be clear cut, there's reassurance. He has met with Conner, explained everything. And I don't know where the doubts are coming from because this guy's an professional and he's on the conservation of the Moleboro area. And that's a very nice area. So... Conner or the chairman will be at the next meeting to explain that.
Maybe Conner would like to add?
So, I had a productive meeting today with the chair of the town lands committee and the chair of the conservation commission. Both myself and the chair of the town lands committee will attend the conservation commission meeting on the 7th. I'll accept some responsibility for the misunderstanding. I was under the belief that the conservation commission supported the town lands committee's efforts in acquiring a forester. My understanding recently is that they weren't really aware in the loop. So, we'll meet on the 7th and bring them up to speed and share the information that's been had. I think the important, the two important questions with the conservation commission, which I will discuss on November 7th, are certainly the forester. My conversation with the chairs that they're supportive of forestry management plans, they're supportive of paying for those out of the conservation fund, but would just like to be part of the conversation, part of the process. And like I said, I'll accept some responsibility for not making sure that that happened early on. The second thing with the dam, we had a good conversation about that as well and I'll have updates for the board forthcoming. I think it will be important for the select board and conservation commission to iron out specifically where both groups anticipate repairs to that dam and the engineering that's necessary to come from. I think I've heard from this board that your intention is that the conservation fund will pay for that. Only the conservation commission can expend from that fund. So, I think it's important, if that is this board's intention, I'll talk about it on November 7th and get a feeling for it if that's likely or not. Regardless, the work has to be done. And, you know, that, if there's a disagreement, that, like I said, will have to be ironed out between the conservation commission and select board. But I will report back after I attend the meeting on the 7th.
Mr. Air, you see your podium anyway. Carry on.
All right. Well, Conner, you don't have to take any blame. I've kept the conservation informed to all of the seizures. And there's two members on the conservation on the town lands committee, so you have no involvement in it. They were informed on everything. So, you don't have to take credit or discredit by anything.
I appreciate that. It's still your mic, Mr. Air.
And it's what time do they need?
And that's all that. And I just want to verify, Conner, they were informed.
Mr. Bailey, I know you had a comment and then also it's your mic or your Select Person's.
My comment is that, who is the chairman of the conservation commission?
Ken Grossman.
And who are the other four members?
Ann Melvin, Charlie Briggs, Marie... Uh, no. Call me Dan.
Ann, Ann, Ann Melvin.
She hasn't moved yet?
Pam.
Pam's there. Pam isn't moving or anything. Ann's in here for a lot of kids. She's a very happy notion.
I believe I've covered the full members.
Thank you very much.
Where are you thinking about?
I think you trans.
I have nothing to report.
All right. Select Person Hatch?
The meeting that was scheduled in November that is going to be canceled because he's found that he couldn't meet the requirements without going before the zoning board, which is a good idea. So, there won't be a meeting of the zoning board in November.
Select Person Hardikoff?
I was not in attendance at the recreation commission meeting because I was here. And the next meeting for the school board that I'll be attending is November 5th at 5:30. And then, Select Person Hatch will take November 19th at 6:00 p.m. And the session they're having in between is a working budget session. And I don't think that that is a session we need to attend.
I have no meetings to report since we've already talked about everything that we had, so... Last public comment? I'm hoping you're stepping up to tell us about drug take back there.
Actually, I am. Deputy Chief George Joey Barrington, PD. Less of a comment and more of a thank you. Officer Seaworth and I sat out from 10 to 2 on Saturday in a beautiful fall day and collected two large boxes of prescription drugs and whatnot. So, those were disposed of over at P's this morning. Thank you for the town of Barrington for coming out. Thank you for performing.
Casey O'Brien, 24 Hall Road. I just wanted to bring up, if everybody didn't know, I was the only one that applied for the clerk of the works. I agree with the decision not going with clerk of the works, but you should have made a decision sooner. All these proposals and these requests for bids that go out, people, I think, are edging away from Barrington more and more because this is what happens. And we don't get enough people to bid on stuff because the decisions are never made and no one's picked.
And they're never closed.
And this has happened for years and years. So, a lot of people are gun shy from taking two hours of their time that they could be doing something else instead of writing up a proposal and making money with it and not losing money. So, I just want you guys to keep in mind moving forward. Yeah, it sounded like a great idea,